Who are we missing, aside Steve?
I think that's just it. I think we're just missing Steve.
Okay, let's wait just one more minute. And while we're waiting, let me ask a question of staff. Do you have a way of capturing all of the community members that are present at the meeting? Or do we need, you know, when we're there in person, we all introduce ourselves, or the people in the audience introduce themselves, so we have their names for the record?
We can capture it from the the list, the participant list.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Yurka, though, I will note that we'll only be able to capture people who have their names. So perhaps we could have folks just change their screen name. Otherwise, it's hard to know. Who's here?
Okay. I'm not sure how complicated a process it is to change screen names. So perhaps those that don't have an actual name could introduce themselves.
Just for folks, if you hover your cursor over your little square, there should be three dot, dot, dots that pop up. And if you tap on that, there's a menu that comes up and rename is on there. And so you can just tap that and then you can do change your name that way. And also for the record, since this is new, we'll capture them at the beginning of the meeting. So who's ever here at the beginning of the meeting is who will have recorded.
Great. Okay, well, I think we should probably go ahead and get started and we'll hopefully Steve will join us shortly. We do have a quorum without him. So it's 4:03 PM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Mans Nighting planning commission to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our August 16, 2021 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, subtractions that need to be made? I'm assuming all the planning commissions had an opportunity to read them. Phil?
I noticed that Jesse's first name obviously is spelled differently at the bottom of the page. It's J E S S Y. I'm assuming that's just creating spelling by the computer.
Okay. Can we ask staff to correct one or whichever one is correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other things to note? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted with the correction to the spelling of Jesse's name.
I'll make a motion to approve them as submitted with that correction.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Bert. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the minutes are approved. Thank you. I guess we have an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on an item that's not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to call something to our attention or say something?
Don't see any raised hands.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for being here anyway. The main item on our agenda today is a land use hearing. This is the final plat for the Highlands subdivision phase three. Before we open the hearing, I want to explain what's going to happen. And for those of you that are here all the time, this is really boring, but we go through it every time. I'm going to open the hearing. After that, the applicant will present an overview of the development. The staff report will be presented, followed by questions or comments from the commission. After that, general comments or questions will be heard from members of the public regarding the proposed action or the criteria that we're basing our action on. The applicant will be given opportunity to respond to any points that are raised. And then I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and the commission will formulate findings and determine whether the requirements of the zoning ordinance have been met. We are interested in hearing from the public on all issues associated with this proposal. Just a brief reminder, speakers should identify any new issues that have not already been raised. If you wish to go on record, concurring with a previous speaker, please indicate this and end your testimony. We may limit each speaker to three minutes, just to save time if it becomes necessary. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a final plat for subdivision, for the Highlands subdivision phase three. This application is for 23, I believe, residential lots to be developed in one phase in the special residential recreation zone. The preliminary plat for this development originally as phases three and four was approved by the planning commission on May 17, 2001. 2021, sorry. Before we start, I want to go through and ask procedural questions for the record. First, are there any members of the commission who must announce any actual or potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, including any site visits? Let's start with Jenna today. Can you unmute yourself, Jenna?
Oh, sorry. I have no conflict, bias, ex parte contact. I have not visited the site since May.
Thank you. Bert?
I have no bias, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest. And I have not visited the site since in the last year, I guess.
Okay, Lee?
I have no conflict of interest, no bias, no ex parte contact. I visited the site about a month ago.
Can I, just before we continue this, I just got a text from Steve saying that he's having trouble getting in. He's having a problem with the with the password. I had trouble a couple times too, so I'm going to just text him really quickly and let him know to keep trying. Okay, John, how about you?
No bias, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest, and I I haven't been to the site for about six months.
Okay, and Phil?
No conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, and I visited the site about a month ago.
Okay, and as for me, I have no conflict of interest, no bias, no ex parte contact, and I did visit the site as recently as today. And we're going to wait, just give Steve one quick second here to see if we can get him in before we move on. While we're waiting, let's just see if any members of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact.
I don't see. See a hand raised, Leslie, Frank, and I don't see the rest of it, but, and Pearl, it looks like.
Hello, this is Frank. Am I, are you still listening?
Yep.
You've mentioned the incorrect password. My wife wanted to participate in the public comment section, and she's unable to because she is getting an incorrect password as well and cannot connect. I'm at a different location altogether. And I just want to make note that she wishes to make a comment. But I have no way, she has no way of commenting to you.
Okay, I will hold that till the end of the meeting, since we've opened the public hearing at this point. And hopefully she'll be able to log in. I know I had trouble with the password. It didn't accept it the first three times I tried it, but I kept trying and it finally did let me in. So hopefully she'll be able to join us.
Okay, all right. If she cannot, is there an alternative way to her to comment?
It's always appropriate to send email or a message to city staff with a request that it be shared with the planning commission.
Is there any way that it can be officially added to the agenda for today due to technical difficulties?
Public comment isn't really added to the agenda. It's just a, it's a matter of making a statement or a comment, bringing something to our attention. I will, let me write myself a real quick note here to add this after we're finished.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm sorry she's having trouble.
Just so folks know, I pasted the passcode into the chat, but it is 804555.
Yes, it just says incorrect password over and over to her for some reason. Anyhow, I don't want to trouble you any further with her technical difficulties. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, and it looks like Steve hasn't joined us either, so he must still be having trouble with that. Okay. So I did not hear any member of the audience wishing to challenge any of the right of the commissioner, any commissioners to hear this. Is that correct? No hands were raised on that. Okay, so who's going to do our talking today, Jim or Rick? Want to present your development?
Yeah, let's let Rick do that. If he's there, you there, Rick?
I am.
Make it away.
All right, so we have the 23 lots as Chair Yurka said, and it was originally two phases. Now, according to the county, made into one phase three. That the the name of this particular area, we're calling Meadows neighborhood, for what that's worth. And so far, we have made good progress. Jim can weigh in on the production side of everything from a from a reception standpoint, we have had a good reception from from the buying public and have certainly stuck to our goals of what we thought we would be able to do with with a lot of interest in the in the development and in this particular phase. It's got a completely different feel than our first two phases, and we're finding that that is that is, has been popular with the buying public. Jim, you want to weigh in?
Sure, I just will add that I'm happy with the progress. We have got we're probably about two thirds of the way through with the water sewer and storm water. We've had some challenges getting materials like everyone else, but I think we've got that pretty well under control and it's moving along nicely. My only concern is that we get blacktop down before the plant closes this year, weather weather permitting, of course, and we have to have 50 degrees and rising to pave. And it looks like we'll have the the rock town to pay probably middle of October, maybe a little bit earlier than that. And if the weather is warm enough, we can blacktop. If not, we will have to bond the blacktop and any other work that isn't wrapped up then, but it looks like it's moving along quite nicely.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Okay, Walt, would you give us the staff report, please?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, excellent. Again, this is the final plat review for Highlands. This is actually a combined review, if you will. Originally, it was separated as Highlands three and four, but they decided to just come back and do one plat to cover both phases. I reviewed this against our the decision. And actually, the final plat mirrors the application, so there is no changes there. All 23 lots meet all the requirements. And going through the conditions of approval, the other comply or their administrative, for example, you know, buildings must comply with our development code, so they're in conformance with the requirements. And it's my recommendation that the planning commission approve the final plat with just one note that the either complete the improvements or bond to complete the improvements. And as Jim mentioned, that they're trying to get it done before before they close the asphalt plant. So once one of those two items are taken care of, then the chair, the chair can sign the plat. With that, we have to answer any questions that folks may have.
Okay, we'll open it up to the commission then to direct questions either to staff or to the developers. Go ahead, Phil.
Thank you, Karen. This is a question for Walt. On page three of your report, paragraph three, subparagraph one, you talk about street improvement shall include the turnaround area on the north end of Meadows Drive. I'm assuming that that is the light colored street improvement that joins Seabview to Meadows. Is that correct?
Right, there is a requirement that at the north end that they provide some sort of paved turnaround area, recognizing that it doesn't continue any further, but they do need some sort of T turn around to ensure folks can, you know, literally turn around and get back down the street.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that that's what you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jenna?
I have a question on Walt's report, but it's probably a question for Jim and Rick. On page two of the findings, letter D, as note, the final plat is being submitted as a replat. In effect, tract E of the original proposal is being further divided into a, into subdivision lots. Can you just explain what that means?
Essentially, what you have is that anytime you modify a plat, it's a replat. So they had an original plat, and now they're taking this portion of it. I think it is tract E, and they're replating that. So you just don't have a new plat if there's a prior plat. They're all subsequent replats, and that's consistent with state law.
And then plat E isn't shown on the maps?
No, this is, I believe this is, boy, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is tract E that's being replanted.
That is correct. My that is correct. I'm not looking at it right now. My screen just went black. I don't know what's going on here. I'm having a few computer problems, but if I could call it up, I could answer that. Let me see here. I mean, my screen just went black. Let me see, let me see here. Hold on a minute. Let me grab the plans here. I'm sorry, but I gotta get out a paper copy.
One way, one way of looking at this is if you have a subdivision, there's a large parcel left and that was identified either as a lot or a tract. And then the developer comes back and subdivides that, that is a replat. That's how, that's how the state law works.
Correct. I'm sorry, but I can't call up the plat. My, my screen just went black. Rick, can you answer that question? Are you looking at the plat?
I'm pulling it up now, Jim.
I'm sorry.
And I just see all the tracks listed. I just don't see a tract E on it. And I don't know if that even pertains to this section.
I'm trying to look it up here on my iPhone.
Okay. If you look at Highlands three at the top, this is on let's see, what would that be? The, for the second, the second platted page, the very heading says replat of tract E Highlands two, and it gives the, the location. So I would, my understanding, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that this entire thing is, is, was originally tract E. Is that correct, Tim?
I'm looking here. Yes.
So the whole thing was E, and then it just got replatted to several?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a couple, Karen. Page one, paragraph F, it refers to the preliminary plan as being done on August 16, 2021. I believe, I don't think that was when the preliminary plat was presented, is it?
I think you're correct. I think that was presented May 17.
May 17, yes. This should probably reflect the actual date that that preliminary plat was submitted.
That can be done very simply.
Okay, second question is I'd like to have an opinion from somebody as to what we are approving at this meeting. If you, if the document that represents the new the new drawings, the, I guess there, how many pages are there in this submission? I guess there's four sheets. Are we approving everything that appears on those four sheets? Or only the section of those four sheets that applies to the actual lots in the subdivision? The reason I'm asking, there are street locations and other things in there. And I guess I don't know whether we are also approving those or just the lots. Does anyone have an opinion on that?
Yes, if you can hold for one moment, let me just pull up the final plat information here. Actually, the two key things that are being approved are sheet one and sheet two. Those are the items that are going to be recorded. Everything else is just information only because that's what they did submit with us. But everything that's related, actually, it sheets one through four are all part, excuse me, sheets one through four are all part of the document that will be recorded.
I agree with that, Walt. The it is all, all of the pages, because you've got on page three and four, we've got reference to ease months and lot sizes and what have you, so that would get recorded.
How about the street locations?
That is certainly included.
Absolutely, yeah.
Even though they're outside of the actual lots of the subdivision?
That is all part, is my understanding, that is all part of the replat for tract E, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if any changes are made to those in the future, that will have to come back to the city or to the planning commission as a modification.
If there are any subsequent changes, that would be part of a replat of a recorded document.
I agree.
Correct.
I agree with that.
Any, any other questions, comments? Okay, I don't hear any from the commission, so at this point, I would open public testimony. Let me see if I have any notes on that. Many members of the audience who wish to make a comment or ask a question related to this development, if you'd raise your hand. I don't see any. Do you, Layla?
Do not.
Okay, and have we received any letters or emails that would like the commission to review?
We have not.
Okay. Do the applicants want to make any statements following questions from the commission, any closing remarks?
I'm good, Rick.
I'm good.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public testimony portion of the discussion, and I'll invite members of the commission to talk amongst themselves. You may ask additional questions of the applicant audience members or staff, but we're basically limiting this to deliberations on the merits of the application. Any commissioners want to jump out in front of this? Okay, anybody want to propose a motion to approve or a motion to deny? Okay, anybody want to propose a motion to approve or a motion to deny?
Karen, uh, I move that the planning commission accept the final plat for Highlands one, phase three. Subject to the findings and recommendations based on the staff report.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hey, the motion carries. And congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Now you can get serious about your work.
That's right, we'll get after it.
Okay, this would be um, a good time to see if uh Frank or Leslie has been able to, to add anything to the public uh comments portion.
Uh, unfortunately, my wife has tried over and over again to connect and she just keeps getting denied. Uh, I don't have her uh speech with me. So um, would, can we email it to you or somehow um communicate this to you? What would be the best way to get it to you?
Um, guessing the best way would be to email it to Layla and she can circulate it to the commission. Um, or please come back next time and um try, you know, try again in person. But yeah, we would be happy to read um, or hear from.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, very sorry about that, but uh, yeah, it just, it did not work for her.
Frank, just so you know, I put that planning inbox email in the chat. There's also a phone number, so if she wanted to call in as opposed to trying to get on Zoom, that would be another option.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's also in the chat.
Yeah, it was working for her, but then she said she got kicked out before the meeting and was never able to connect again, unfortunately.
I'm sorry to hear that. It's, I, I'm looking forward to the time when we can meet in person again. We don't have tech. Oh, there, Steve, yay.
Oh.
Have you been here all along, Steve, or did you finally just get in? You might need to unmute yourself, so we can hear you. Okay, maybe Steve can't hear me.
I can hear you now.
Sorry, sorry about the technical issues, Steve. I hope, were you able to, are you just now joining us?
I am just now joined you. Uh, actually, my computer shut down. I kept trying so many times that this.
It blew up. Well, you're, um, we, we've just approved the final plat for the Highland subdivision. So I'm sorry you missed um, the opportunity to speak on that. But um, I would love to um introduce uh, the transportation, transportation plan update from um Kara Hall. Is that, did I pronounce your name correctly?
You did, thank you.
You're welcome, so. Take it away, let us know. What do we need to know?
If it's possible, I'm going to share my screen. Oh, it looks like maybe, is it possible to get that enabled? If not, I can go forward without the presentation.
Yeah, you guys are testing my technological prowess today.
Sorry.
Um, no, it's totally cool. Um, just give me a second, I'm gonna see if I can.
Where's, where's Nina today? She can do it.
Well, you know, it's a lot of staff to have three people here.
Yeah, I know, it's, that's, it's hard to have that many in the building right now.
Yeah, um, let me see. Judy, I don't know if you're there, but I think as co-host, I can't. Um, and if you are there, if you saw the Kara's name. And there should be a little, if you hover your um cursor over her name, it should say more. And I believe there it should say make co-host. I'm totally putting Judy on the spot.
Ah, I, it looks like we got it.
I did it.
You did it, rock on, Judy, see?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your patience, everyone.
Okay. Well, thank you all for letting me join you today um, to give you a little bit of an update about the Nahalum Bay Transportation System Plan um, and where we're at in this pro- project. So um, the Transportation System Plan, um, often referred to as a TSP is being developed for the communities of Manzanita and Nahalum and Wheeler. Um, so it is one, one plan for the entire Nahalum Bay, Bay region. Um, but we have structured it um, to provide um an opportunity for each of the communities to weigh in um separately. And you'll see some of the, the ways we're doing that as I move through this um brief presentation I have for you all. So what are we trying to achieve with this TSP? So first, developing a transportation system um for all users. So thinking about how drivers, transit riders, walkers and bicyclists need to travel within your community. Predicting how well the system will work in the future and suggest improvements. So we know there are some um areas that have congestion today. Um, areas where there are not adequate sidewalks or, or bicycle facilities. Um, and thinking about as uh traffic continues to increase, how will that affect how the transportation system works? Establish new goals and policies to guide city decision-making um over the next twenty years. And develop a prioritized list of transportation projects to support bicyclists, pedestrians, transit cars and safety. And then lastly, um, make recommendations about how to pay for improvements. Um, so funding is, is always a constraint, um, and that is not likely to change. Um, especially from ODOT's perspective moving forward. So how can we be thinking about um strategic ways like grants? Uh, that you can all be applying for to move some of these projects we're going to be identifying forward. So this is just a brief overview of the process and the timeline. Um, so you can see we're about halfway through. We're just getting into step number five there, which is develop and evaluate solutions. Um, and we're going to be working on this through June twenty twenty two. So still a little ways to go here, so that's why we wanted to kind of take a, a stop here midway and share some updates with you all what we've been working on. So this is really the process that we're following. So this project began with um, a technical evaluation of existing and future conditions. So thinking about how the system is working for all modes. Um, we've then developed a set of goals. Um, and we have both regional goals and um, city-specific goals, which I'll share with you um, here momentarily. And then we have performance metrics. So that's going to be how, how we're evaluating how well potential projects um, advance the goals that we've established. So those three items shown there in green, that's what's complete so far. And then those last four um, shown in blue are kind of what's next for us. So we're getting into the development of projects. So now that we know where there are problems today and where the system um may not at, operate adequately in the future. Now we can start to think about projects to address those, those issues. Um, like I mentioned, funding, um, how this will all be paid for. And then that will lead us into a draft plan, um, followed by council adoption. Um, and just for your all um knowledge, we do have planning commission workshops um, scheduled to occur um before we get to that draft plan stage. So that will likely be early next year. So we will be bringing all of this work to you and asking for you to provide your input. So um, you've heard me mention goals and we also have objectives. So goals are really what we want the transportation system to look like in twenty years. And then objectives are how those will be achieved over the next twenty years. And then projects are the transportation solutions that create the system we want. Um, so with that, I'm going to just give you a quick overview of the goals and objectives that we've developed um, so far, starting with our regional goals. Uh, so we have five regional goals. Um, the first one is quality of life. So this is a focus on balancing needs of local travelers, regional through traffic and visitors in Halum Bay on weekends and during the summer months to preserve the quality of life and local character. So you can see we've got four objectives listed under there. Um, those objectives include um options for visitors to park once. So thinking about would it be possible to um implement some sort of regional shuttle service where visitors can um park in one of the three cities and travel between um, the other three. Um, supporting the transit district to increase transit service. Um, collaborating with ODOT, um, ODOT maintains and owns um Highway one oh one. So it is important that they are on board with any solutions being proposed for that highway. Um, and then thinking about how we're creating more comfortable downtown spaces um, to accommodate visitors um, as well as residents who are needing to travel. So our second regional goal is safety. So this is primarily focused on managing access and speed on Highway one oh one to reduce collisions for all users. Um, as you can see, their objectives for this one um include improvements at locations where there have been crashes um, involving a bicyclist or pedestrian. Um, thinking about where crashes may be likely to occur in the future. So we're not just waiting for a crash to happen before we're improving the system. Um, working with ODOT to implement engineering and traffic calming strategies on Highway one oh one. Um, and then lastly, um discouraging new access points onto Highway one oh one. Um, in an effort to minimize potential conflicts with bicyclists and pedestrians traveling on that corridor. So that brings us to our next regional goal, which is connectivity. So creating connections between the Nahalum Bay communities to provide safe paths for people walking, biking or other, using other non-auto modes. So um, as we've kind of been working through the early stages of this process, we've heard about a lot of desire um, for people to be able to walk and bike between the communities. Um, specifically off of Highway one oh one. So um, thinking about what opportunities there might be to improve that. Um, making sure that existing and new infrastructure meets ADA standards. And then um, increasing connections and recreational opportunities. Um, so a number of uh trail planning efforts and how can this plan support those? Uh, our next to last regional goal here is resiliency. So creating a transportation system that's resilient to extreme weather events and able to safely accommodate evacuation and recovery efforts. Um, so that includes things like working with ODOT and Tillamook County to ensure that critical transportation facilities um are maintained and meet seismic standards. Um, things like improving traffic circulation and access for fire and emergency vehicles. Um, whether that be in the event of an emergency or just with, on a weekend when the congestion is high and they need to get in there to provide critical assistance. And then maintaining local infrastructure to withstand extreme weather events. And then lastly, on the regional side here, we have financially viable. So creating a transportation system that's financially viable with consideration for lifecycle costs. Um, and so this one is the idea that I was mentioning earlier about how we can identify new funding sources to make local dollars go further. Um, so making sure that we're coming up with cost-effective solutions. Um, thinking about those outside funding sources. Prioritize investments and maximizing partnerships. And then consider future operation and maintenance costs and investment choices. Um, a lot of times it's, it's a struggle to fund the infrastructure that we have and we want to be sure that we are not um, making that problem worse as we move into the future. So um, two specific goals for the city of Manzanita. So the first is manage access from Highway one oh one um, to Manzanita and the recreational opportunities in the area to minimize cut-through traffic and seasonal congestion. So this is really a focus on improving connections within Manzanita and the neighborhoods um, as well as the UGB to improve local vehicle circulation. Um, and then also supporting other planning efforts to create non-motorized and transit connections from key destinations to the commercial core. And then our last uh goal for Manzanita is supporting economic vibrancy and reducing parking demand by providing walking, biking and transit connections to the commercial core um, and the beach. Um, so prioritizing separated um facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, um, especially on roadways with high vehicle speeds or where there is a high amount of traffic. And then developing solutions that balance the needs of um vehicles and pedestrian bicycle travel in the downtown area um into and from the residential areas. I can pause there if anyone has a question about any of the goals. Um, before I talk a little bit about kind of what this is all going to lead us to.
Hey Kara, if I could just jump in real quick, um, thank you for that. This is Layla, by the way. And I'm sorry, I'm not visually present today, y'all. I've had some internet issues to trying to keep it running. Um, but I, those goals were reviewed by some folks from the community as well. Um, and there's a community um group that's engaged in the transportation system plan. And I've sort of been with the patience of Kara and team getting up to speed since I uh came here. Um, but we, we have some lean participation, I think is one way to describe it. So I just wanted to throw that out there. If there are anybody is here that would have an interest um, either on the planning commission or here from the community um, to please reach out to me because I did check with Kara and team and they are open to um bringing um, some folks on um into this process. So I just, I wanted to throw that out there and I appreciate Kara letting me jump in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a, a great kind of point for me to, to share kind of a little more on how those were developed. Um, so as Layla mentioned, we do have what we're calling a planning advisory commission for this project. Um, and this commission is made up of representatives from each of the three cities. Um, we also have the county um involved. Um, and we have met with this group two different times now. Um, so the first time they um were really kind of helping us craft those goals that I just shared with you. Um, so that was a really a discussion about where the transportation system needs to go over the next twenty years. Um, and then that was followed by our first community engagement event, which I'm going to share just a, a brief summary of here um, in a moment. So hopefully some or all of you saw that and participated in that, got an opportunity to weigh in there. Um, and then we just had our second um, uh PAC meeting. And that was really focused on um, those objectives I just talked about and starting to think about what kinds of projects will help us advance those um, over the next twenty years. So um, the next touch point with that group um is scheduled for um, a little bit later this year. And they'll really be weighing in on um, a more expansive list of projects at that point. And yes, we still have plenty of room for participants. So if any of you um, are interested and would like to join, um, just let us know and we'll make sure you get included um, in the next invite for that.
Kara, can you, would you mind showing us those last two slides again?
Sure.
Specific Manzanita, it's, they seem kind of lean to me.
Yes.
So I'm just, oh, I would love to just kind of hear how these goals came about and who um, you know, it, it sounds like you may have had somebody from the council working on this. But are there, was there public participation as well or?
So the, the way they went through the process is we were working closely with city staff initially. So city staff um weighed in and provided some input. Um, then we went to that broader group, so that was the planning advisory um council. And um, I don't have the names specifically right now, but I can definitely track those down of who participated in that meeting. Um, and they helped us refine these goals. Um, and then um, in August, they were shared with the community at large on our project website, which I'll also be sharing with you um, today and asked, asked for their input. Um, so we've been through kind of a couple different rounds of um, iteration now. Um, but this is something where, you know, we're open to hearing feedback along the way. Um, and if there's something else that we think we should be capturing with these goals, um, I'd love to hear that too.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, so our first one here was access management, um, and then also the economic vibrancy there. Um, and I will also share, we're in the process of getting some of these. And I will also share, we're in the process of getting some of these materials we've been developing on our project website. And that, once posted, will have a lot more detail and expand on that process as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I talked a little bit earlier about developing a project list. So there are really a number of things that are going to go into that project list. So I talked about, we're already aware of where there are network gaps today, where we're missing facilities for people to bike and walk. We're also aware of areas where safety is a concern. The cities all also have some adopted plans and projects that have been identified previously. So those will also be considered. And then LOS, they're standing for level of service. And that's really the congestion side of things. So where is there an intersection with a lot of congestion? ODOT has standards for how much delay is acceptable on state highways. So we need to make sure that we're maintaining a system that operates within ODOT standards. So that's all going to help us inform an expanded and unprioritized project list. So that is just a list of everything that we could consider doing over the next 20 years. From there, we're going to start to think about, well, how do these projects align with those goals I just talked about? Because we really want to make sure we're moving the communities towards their vision for transportation. And then we need to think about funding constraints. So that is one requirement of TSPs is that they be fiscally responsible. So we need to make sure that we're planning a system that we can feasibly build or improve over the next 20 years. And that's really going to lead us to that prioritized list of projects, which will focus on both near term solutions. So things that may be less expensive within existing right of way, things that can be achieved, you know, within five years. And then there will also be projects that are a little more long term, more expensive, requiring more coordination between multiple agencies that'll likely take in that 10 to 20 year timeline to implement. So I do just want to share a little bit with you about what we heard from the community when we reached out to them. So this was our first community engagement event and we will have two more. This was really an opportunity for community members to share their transportation issues and challenges as well as weigh in on those goals that I just shared with you. And so this opportunity was hosted on our project website and it was live for most of the month of August. So 225 views total. We did have a survey on there in which we got 66 responses. And you can see just about half of those were from people who identified Manzanita as their primary residence. So a lot of great input already on the community side. I won't spend too much on this, but this is just kind of an overview of what all we asked them about. So the goals and objectives, the roadway system, other transportation options, challenges, so where do where do they struggle to travel today? There was also a map where they could pinpoint specific issues and then also just next steps. So where we're going next from here. So a couple key themes that we heard across all the communities with one specific call out for the 101 and Seventh Intersection in Nahalum, which I know is is a challenge to navigate during busy times. So just many roads are too narrow to feel safe under the current speeds when we think about bicyclists and pedestrians. A lot of desire to separate bikes and pedestrians from autos. And then also thinking about popular destinations and connections to those. So getting more into feedback on the goal side of things. So we asked everyone who completed the survey to weigh in on the regional goals. And that was really to tell us, do you agree with these goals? You agree, but you think that we should make some changes or you disagree altogether. And as you can see, most respondents agreed, but we did get a few proposed changes. So a desire to add bike lanes and more alternative transportation options, a focus on transportation modes and routes in case of emergency. And then just concerns about change and potentially attracting more tourists. And then on the Manzanita side, we heard increasing alternative transportation options and infrastructure for transportation methods. Again, this was, anybody could complete and weigh in for anything. So we still heard a lot about the intersection in Nahalum. And then again, more about the emergency routes and the attracting more tourists. But overall, still getting pretty good feedback that we're on the right track with the goals. And then just kind of breaking it down a little bit more. So the feedback on the issues, this will really be informing how we develop that project list moving forward. So within Manzanita, you can see there when asked about the roadway network and driving conditions, really most people identifying those are as adequate or needing minor improvement. So less concern on the needs major improvement there. Same for walking and rolling conditions. So within the city, you can see again, the adequate and the needs minor improvement. But one thing that will definitely be keeping in mind moving forward is the outside of the cities was one identified as needing needing major improvement for people walking in the communities. And then on the biking conditions is where we start to see everybody move into the needs major improvement. So this was a concern for Manzanita residents as well as the region as a whole. And then lastly, just asking people about transportation on as a whole. And you can see there that within the Nahalum Bay area, we're adequate on the transit side. Similarly, thinking that aviation, not a lot of people are sure there or it's adequate. And then also asking about marine and rail too. So this was just kind of our our other opportunities because while we talk a lot about vehicles, bicycles and pedestrians, we are thinking about the transportation system as a whole here. So a couple other issues feedbacks that we heard from Manzanita was safety concerns related to traveling by foot or bicycle. And just again, the need for multi-use facilities, some concern about the conditions of the road, roads within the city and then safety concerns. And we see a couple of specific roadways called out there. And then just a desire for better signage to reduce confusion and congestion from tourists. And then a concern about as volume continues to increase, what that's going to look like for congestion within the city. And then similarly, kind of outside the city, a lot of concern about speed limits. And those are too high as we get close to the cities. And then the lack of safe facilities for walking and biking. So where are we going next? I mentioned project development and evaluation. That's kind of the next technical piece we're working on. The community event, our second one is planned for the end of this year. At this time, the plan is to remain virtual. So that'll be again, hosted on our project website until conditions improve enough for us to host those events in person. And then we will also have PAC meeting number three coming up towards the end of the year where we'll be discussing the recommended projects. Any questions? I'm also going to share the link to the project website in the chat, just in case any of you don't have that. Like I mentioned, we're getting ready to do a pretty major update following the PAC meeting we just had here recently. So we'll be posting some additional materials for the project as well as some updated schedules, kind of where we're at overall. And like Leila said, we'd love to have your participation on the Planning Advisory Council, if that's something you're interested in. Those those meetings are generally being held now on Thursday evenings. I think it's what we're going to be targeting moving forward. And we should have three more for the course of the project. So not too much more commitment needed.
I would be very interested in in that link to the project website. I don't think I am aware. Okay, so can I just, can I just copy this?
Yes, yep, you should, if you click on that, that should open up. So there's more about what the TSP will do on there. Like I said, some links to past and upcoming events. Those are getting updated here shortly. And then some opportunities to contact us as well. And this will be how we will be communicating with the broader communities until it is safe to do so in person. So posting project updates here as well as virtual open house, if you will, for our community engagement events.
Do you see a role for the planning commission on this coming up? Or is this mostly a city council driven?
No, we do have a planning mission workshop slated for early next year. And that point is really, once we've got the project list evaluated and we've been able to get some input from the community at that point, we will be coming back to you all to share what we heard from them and how we're proposing to craft that into the draft TSP. And so that'll be a working session where we'll be asking for you to weigh in on that final prioritization process to inform that list of projects in the plan.
Okay. Any other questions from either the commission or the public? Don't hear any, so I wanted to say thank you very much, Kara. This was really informative. I had no idea that you'd gotten this far.
Thank you all for letting me join and give you an update. And I hope to see some of you on the PAC or maybe at an in-person engagement event sometime next year if if we get there.
That sounds good. Thank you very much. Any parting shots for Kara before we let her go? Okay, then how about general updates? Leila, do we have anything or Walt coming down the pike? And maybe you could update us on when you expect us to hear from the deli again, if we if we have another date. I know that administratively, we haven't a longer extension on their project. It was originally supposed to come back to us this month and they've requested some additional time. So do we, do we have any ideas on that?
Walt's been in touch with the applicant, so I'll let him jump in on that.
Okay, yes, I've been working with Jim Fanjoy. And the last communication we had was about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Haven't heard anything since. And I guess the only thing I could say is just stay tuned.
Okay, okay. Do we have any other applications coming in for our October meeting?
Not as of today.
What's the, what's the drop dead deadline?
Oh, it depends. I mean, I typically like to get the stuff out a week in advance. So usually to me, the drop dead's about two weeks prior to the planning commission meeting because that gives staff time to review documents and get it posted, but.
Okay, and do you have projects in the pipeline that are going to potentially come to our attention in the next? I just out of curiosity, thinking about the winter months, it starts so early and and also the holidays coming up. What are schedules like?
So far, no, we're in some early discussions with Jim and others about kind of the next phase of the Highlands, but I don't anticipate that coming before you anytime soon. And I don't, I'm racking my brain, but I haven't received any kind of commercial or larger inquiries that would be subject to planning commission. So I think right now, most of development is just going through the building department.
Okay.
And others can chime in if I've missed something, but I'm pretty sure we don't have anything coming up.
Okay, any comments or questions before we adjourn the meeting? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. I don't know why everybody's so quiet.
I was going to say, John, geez, everybody wants to stay. We missed each other so much. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thanks, thanks, Bert. And I think that we don't even need to approve that motion. I I think once it's been moved and seconded, we can say goodbye. So thank you all very much. I look forward to seeing you next month, maybe. Oh, could I add one more thing briefly? I just wanted to say a special thank you to city staff for being here. I it, I know it's makes your days really, really long. And I really do appreciate this, all of your attention to planning commission issue. So thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to sign off then.